Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning everyone and welcome to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, February 13th. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we're good. We'll share. We'll share. Yeah. And our inspirational word for the day, whenever you possibly can, do good to those who need it. Never tell your neighbor to wait until tomorrow if you can help them now. And we have our dog for the day.
Say hi to the new Commissioner?
Ah, yeah. There you go.
Morning.
Thank you.
This is kennel number 12. She is available on Saturday. It's a boxer, boxer pit mix, female. We have 15 other dogs at the kennel, so come on down and take a look. We appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Precious.
Madam Clerk?
We have two presentations today, one at 9:45, the US EPA Funded Area Wide Plan, and 10 o'clock, Jen Kennedy for the Marty Grau, Visit Lorraine County.
Okay. We'll probably handle the agenda items first.
Under Resolutions, number one, investments.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Transfers.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second, discussion. Ms. Lundey.
Aye.
I mean, Mr. Lundey.
Mrs. Lundey?
I did!
She's not here today. She, she controls all the votes at home, I know that, but she's not here today, so...
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Well, okay.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
And that would be Mr. Cordez.
I answer to just about anything, as long as you sign my paycheck. The, the, well, welcome to the new Commissioner, but at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, I need an executive session specifically to talk about some new hires at 911, Job and Family Services, Crime Lab, and we go over those applications. Also, I have one pending legal matter and still working on the sale of real estate. All of those matters are allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, discuss those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of February 5th and 6th.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Community Development, approved contract to Vita Nuova in the amount of $15,000 to develop a redevelopment roadmap for the proposed project sites in the city of Sheffield Lake and Avon Lake. These projects were identified through the Transportation for Livable Communities Initiative.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Yeah, at this point, I'd like to call up our Community Development Director, Don Romanchik. We've been working closely with the communities of Sheffield Lake and Avon Lake, all of our lakefront communities, but in this case, this is where we're hoping to take an additional step to help out with some development plans. Don?
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey and Board. It's a pleasure to be here this morning and with that, we'll go right into it. This contract is a continuation of the efforts that the Board has made along with our lakefront communities to go ahead and take advantage of the greatest asset that we have. We have 23 miles of lakefront and we've started that by applying for funds to figure out how to get people to the lakefront and working with each individual community, Vermillion, Lorraine, Sheffield Lake, and Avon Lake, on picking a spot that was special that they could see economic development and an engine for their local community on that waterfront. We've continued to make progress from that TLCI plan. You'll actually see a presentation about another grant a little bit later today on some of the activities that have been going on in the city of Lorraine and how that has had an impact. And really what this contract will do is, to a lesser extent than what was going on in Lorraine, but help us position with Sheffield Lake and Avon Lake, their two sites, to be able to prepare them for market, to give us a roadmap for what things each community would need to do to move their projects forward and prepare it for the market. Quite simply, what is beginning to define that market, what demand there might be from a real estate perspective, so there's an understanding of, is this something that can sell? And if it were to sell, does it need a subsidy? And if so, how much subsidy would be expected? This is all high level. They'll be working very closely with our Department of Community Development and our ED specialists, as well as with each local community. This will also keep Vita Nuova nearby, just in case we have a question for some things that might happen in Lorraine for the Port Authority or the city along the riverfront as well. So we're getting a great bang for our buck in this way and it's, again, building off of studies we've already done. So we're continuing to make those steps and move towards implementation and to foster an environment that welcomes investment.
And I think it's important to point out that there, you know, Lorraine, I think, and Vermillion probably have more opportunities because there's more access to the lake. Sheffield Lake, Avon Lake really have some limited opportunities there. And so it's just, it's a much smaller scope and some targeting and some people obviously have been having some conversations with those communities about some things and so we're just trying to assist them and provide some insight on what the next steps maybe should be.
Yeah. That's a good summary of how we got here. Thank you.
Tom, where are we at with the Vermillion study that we're doing up on?
Just received an email. We looked at the last parcel. I should have a draft for review in the, in the next week, so we're staying on schedule. That plan will actually recommend a couple of zoning changes and is working with one property owner on that, on a zone change to help facilitate some development. In addition, it is looking at some streetscape to be installed that the city of Vermillion can do shortly where they have development going on. And then we are focusing on gateway kind of entrance to the city.
Where, where it's on 6th there, going from...
6th and Baumhart. And there's a project right now that we're working hard to try and bring their economic development project forward as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much, Don.
Thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Award WSOS Community Action Commission DBA Great Lakes Community Action Partnership Fremont in the amount of $252,203, a contract to provide professional services to a minister and implement Lorraine County's Year 2018 chip grant.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Romanchik?
Don?
If the Board will indulge me, this is a contract that provides us with the ability to do the spec writing and to get the, the homes that need to be repaired that are eligible for the assistance out to the contracting community. We'll be working with WSOS to continue to try and find additional contractors locally to be able to bid on this work. And then at the end of this project, we should have at least 40 homes that we have improved to continue to protect and preserve affordable homeownership within the county.
Total amount of the grant was in excess of $900,000, right?
$973,000 plus we'll have an additional $80,000 in program income that gets reinvested, so we'll have just over a million dollars in resources.
Why don't we run through the communities that we serve with chip real quick?
It would be much easier if we worked throughout the entire county except for Lorraine and Illyria, which operate their own programs, and the city of Vermillion, which also has its own program. But anywhere else in the county, we're there.
But they're targeted areas?
No, and this one, it's strictly based upon the eligibility of the individual homeowner. So this is a means-tested or an income-tested program and if family is under 80% of area median income, and we do verify the income, then they would be eligible. But then there are also, we can only spend so much on a property and when we leave that property for our full rehabilitation program, we have to resolve every code issue. We cannot leave one outstanding because we didn't have money. In that case, it's disappointing, but the term is, we walk away.
Now, we've used this for, even in Avon Lake, for, didn't we do some separations through separation?
Yes, that has actually been one consistent stream of work is to assist those in Avon Lake that do not have the means to separate their storm and sanitary lines. And this has been a way to help protect our environment and keep people in their homes who, when the house was built, was fully compliant and because of rule changes, no longer is.
Great program.
Great. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, Entertainer Renewal Agreement with Dr. Tran Dennis for inmates of the jail, anyone $108.12 per hour, effective retroactive January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Award WSOS Community Action Commission DBA Great Lakes Community Action Partnership Fremont in the amount of $252,203, a contract to provide professional services to a minister and implement Lorraine County's Year 2018 chip grant.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Romanchik?
Don?
If the Board will indulge me, this is a contract that provides us with the ability to do the spec writing and to get the, the homes that need to be repaired that are eligible for the assistance out to the contracting community. We'll be working with WSOS to continue to try and find additional contractors locally to be able to bid on this work. And then at the end of this project, we should have at least 40 homes that we have improved to continue to protect and preserve affordable homeownership within the county.
Total amount of the grant was in excess of $900,000, right?
$973,000 plus we'll have an additional $80,000 in program income that gets reinvested, so we'll have just over a million dollars in resources.
Why don't we run through the communities that we serve with chip real quick?
It would be much easier if we worked throughout the entire county except for Lorraine and Illyria, which operate their own programs, and the city of Vermillion, which also has its own program. But anywhere else in the county, we're there.
But they're targeted areas?
No, and this one, it's strictly based upon the eligibility of the individual homeowner. So this is a means-tested or an income-tested program and if family is under 80% of area median income, and we do verify the income, then they would be eligible. But then there are also, we can only spend so much on a property and when we leave that property for our full rehabilitation program, we have to resolve every code issue. We cannot leave one outstanding because we didn't have money. In that case, it's disappointing, but the term is, we walk away.
Now, we've used this for, even in Avon Lake, for, didn't we do some separations through separation?
Yes, that has actually been one consistent stream of work is to assist those in Avon Lake that do not have the means to separate their storm and sanitary lines. And this has been a way to help protect our environment and keep people in their homes who, when the house was built, was fully compliant and because of rule changes, no longer is.
Great program.
Great. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, Entertainer Renewal Agreement with Dr. Tran Dennis for inmates of the jail, anyone $108.12 per hour, effective retroactive January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021.
So move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
We'll go to the first presentation?
Yep.
Yes.
The first presentation, the US EPA Funded Area Wide Plan, Lorraine Harbor.
Let's see, are we still, is, yes, Tom gonna be here? Is Tom on his way?
I thought Tom was coming in.
He's on it.
Got there quick.
Oh, yeah.
Well, uh, well, the...
If he's en route, we can go to the next.
Oh, okay. Why don't we do that? That way we'll have time here as well.
Yeah. So, Madam Clerk, next presentation?
Jen Kennedy, Visit Lorraine County Marty Grau.
We're always up for Marty Grau.
Yeah.
Regardless of the day of the year, so...
Wish I brought hurricanes.
Well, okay.
Too early?
Go ahead and introduce yourself and I'll switch you over to the computer.
Hi, I'm Jen Kennedy. I'm the interim director of Visit Lorraine County. Congratulations. Thank you for having me here. Okay, I'm here to talk about Marty Grau. With the support of the Commissioners, I am very excited to introduce our most exciting new endeavor. Marty Grau is really such a celebration, we know that in New Orleans, but what we're actually looking to do is celebrate it here up north. People that may not have a chance to get away to New Orleans, what we want to do is give them a countywide place to celebrate. We have, for our first year, 29 bars, restaurants, bakeries, shops, theaters, and lodging that are participating somehow in Marty Grau. And our team worked really hard to, to not just make this about restaurants and bars, is to look across all the different verticals and say, what other industries can we incorporate? How can we get everyone involved? So we will be celebrating March 1st through the 9th. And so the question that I'm sure you're asking is, okay, so tell me about what is Marty Grau? All of the participating establishments are going to be offering some sort of promotion, whether it's muffaladas or poor boys or a special, a special discount. We have an overnight package, a couple overnight packages that have been created. And people actually pick up a passport and they stop into all of the different bars, restaurants, et cetera. What we're trying to do is create excitement, get people out and moving about, get into different places, get them, I kind of just say, out of their comfort zone to try a new place. And at the end, we're actually doing what we're calling the final fet. And we're having a concert, which I'll tell you more about here. But in total, we have 16 bars and restaurants. We've kind of collapsed those two categories. And they'll offer Creole meals, grilled oysters, jambalaya, catfish po'boys, gator bites, rice and beans. I was so impressed with what some of our places came up with. Baskill Brewery actually is doing a beignet stout. So as you can, you know, you know with beer, they've been working on that for quite some time. So we've got some really great things. Three bakeries, they're gonna be offering king cakes, beignets, mini rum bunk cakes and paccies, paccies, excuse me. Five shops will offer deer, different deals and sales. And then four bed and breakfasts will be offering different lodging packages. Our bed and breakfasts were actually the easiest to get on board because they have control. They can control what their offerings are a little bit easier. And then we're really excited about a live concert. Terrence Simeon in the Zydeco Experience is actually coming in from New Orleans. He is a two-time Grammy Award winner and the concert is going to be in partnership with, of course, the Commissioners and Visit Lorraine County and our friends over at Visit Lorraine, excuse me, Lorraine County Community College that have done an awesome job planning the concert and a food showcase. So on the final day of Marty Grau, Saturday, March 9th, we will start the evening with a food showcase. It's $15 per person and it's a great spread from, from New Orleans Creole food and that includes a VIP ticket to the concert. We want everyone to be able to attend the concert, so general admission tickets are just $5. Actually, let's see how this goes here. I put a little music into the presentation, if I can get it going.
Are you moving slides? Because we haven't seen anything move on the...
Sorry. I'm looking at it at my laptop and trying to keep up...
Yeah, you haven't moved a one slide since we started.
There we go. Okay. So I put some music in here so you could hear Terrence Simeon, but of course, it's, it's not playing. But he is, he's really fun. I kind of have been telling people The Princess and the Frog. If you're a Disney fan and have seen The Princess and the Frog, some of the music that he does down in the bayou, it's really fun music and it's gonna be a great night. What we are doing to spread the word, we are actually trying a whole bunch of stuff this time. We're doing broadcast advertising, cable advertising, digital displays, social media advertising, and then some of the things that go along with it, geofencing, behavioral targeting, retargeting. We're also doing local radio on W OBL and WEOL. We like those drive time appearances on Q 104. We're doing a complimentary segment on Cleveland Now. We also have got some ads running at the masthead of the Morning Journal and the Chronicle. And of course, we're using our own media for lots of social media posts and also collaborating with all of the participating places to get their social media places. We're driving people to a landing page, as always. It's the easiest way to track who's actually clicking on things and where they're coming from, so we know what works. And of course, we're going to be reaching out to all of the local media outlets. Other things that we're doing, we're doing window clings to hang in all of the participating establishments, posters. We provide them with a digital font treatment to go into their menus to use on social media. We have big banners that we're working on, official passports. We've got beads underway. So I thought I would share a little bit about who is celebrating. We really did a good job of getting all over the county. We've got 1833, which is in Oberlin, the Baskill Brewery in Lorraine.
Do you have a slide on that?
That's a different slide.
Sorry.
There you go.
Thanks. I can't read up on the screen, so I have to help myself here. Bistro 83, Bootleggers, Bruin Stew, Brickyard in Oberlin, Coles, Public House and Cork Tree Tavern, both in Amherst, Fort's Tavern, which is in Wellington, Giddes Table, which is in Avon Lake, Mutton Jeff's in Lorraine, Nancy's Diner, which is in Grafton, Parker's in Avon Lake, Speak of the Devil in Lorraine, and The Depot, which is also in Grafton-Lagrange area. In terms of bakeries, we have Kudrowski's, we have Little Devil Cupcakery, The Hive. The theaters, we have Stocker Center. The shops, we have Grammy's Primitive Treasures, Lollipops Gift Shop, Sun Novelty, The 530 Shop, and Zellix Flower Shop. In terms of lodging, we have 1833 Holler House out in Oberlin, a beach cottage, and Beacon B&amp;B, both in Lorraine, Sandstone Suites in Amherst. And then because we can't necessarily do a parade, we tried to do something very similar and we did a window decorating contest. So these shops or window storefronts will be participating exclusively in the window decorating contest. That's Grammy's Primitive Treasures, Ratsey Store, Lorraine Palace Theater, The 530 Shop, Nielsen Jewelers, and Sun Novelty. And what we hope is that people go check it out. We've hidden code words or we will hide code words in each of the windows so that they can complete that along their passport, but it's similar to a parade. And then, of course, we want people to win. So if you go to two different segments in each vertical, so two restaurants, two bakeries, you know, two shops, and complete your window decorating and attend the contest, or excuse me, attend the concert, you will have a chance to win a hand-selected basket of things straight from New Orleans. So we've got, you know, coffee and we've got all sorts of cool things that we're gonna get straight from...
The sugary coffee and the beignet mix and all that stuff?
Yep, exactly. Exactly. We're even looking at some, some other fresh options.
Claywains?
Yep, yep. So it's gonna be straight from New Orleans. There's been talk about trying to bring in some muffaladas and, and things like that. So we're gonna be working with some restaurants and things down there in New Orleans to bring those right here. So someone will get a true taste of New Orleans. What questions can I answer?
Just wanna make sure, it's $10 for the dinner and $5 for the show, so a total of $15? Or is it 15 and 5?
15 and 5. The food showcase and your VIP ticket is $15 and then general admission just for the show is $5. Thank you.
Well, if you go to the dinner, you'll get a band, so you get, this way you don't have to worry about the seating because general admission will be coming in while you're... It's a buffet-style dinner. Our fear was that if you're over there eating the food, the theater would fill up. So there's gonna be, it's gonna be cordoned off and you'll have a band to get in, correct?
The, our friends at Stocker have worked out the logistics, but you will have a VIP reserved seat. And it is a food showcase, so we're gonna have some past, we're gonna have some, it's gonna be a whole different level.
They're gonna do the walk-around with the trays?
I'm sorry?
They're not just gonna do buffet, they're gonna do walk-around with the trays too?
Yep, yep. It's gonna be, yes, what we're calling a food showcase, so it's gonna be a little bit of everything, not necessarily buffet-style.
Are they using the culinary students or is this strictly from the Spitzer? Do you know?
They're, they've been working with the chef over there, but I'm not sure...
Adam, they're working with Adams over the school. So I bet you we'll have some students, which would be great, working with those students there.
Yes. I haven't got confirmation on the students, but I would assume they're working with Adam.
I bet you it is. Okay, great.
This is a Grammy Award-winning artist.
Absolutely. I've, I've seen this gentleman on two, three occasions. And one of them was down in New Orleans at the French Quarter Festival. So he's, he's, he's a very well-recognized act, authentic. One thing, we put it on there because we didn't want people to think that we're bringing some people out of Pennsylvania that, you know, played some kind of weird swamp boogie music or something. So it's too bad you couldn't play the Zydeco. A lot of people don't know what Zydeco is, but it is the original music of New Orleans. They're known for jazz, they're known for blues, but Zydeco is the homegrown music right out of New Orleans. So it's, it's gonna be lots of fun.
And actually, I have it up. I could try to play it if you'd like me to.
Do you want us to go back to that?
It's actually, I'm gonna pull it up from my iTunes.
You don't need to go back. It's just the music.
Oh, I, you know what? I bet you I know why. It's because I didn't put the password in for the Wi-Fi, so it's probably not going to work. But you know what? We'll make sure that Teresa has it, so it's easily accessible.
And we're hoping to have about 800? We seat about 850 at the theater?
About 900, I believe. We really wanna hit this out of the park. We're really excited about it. So that would be great to have that many folks. I will say that Amanda from the team at Visit Lorraine County was down at the AAA Show this weekend and got a lot of positive feedback. People were really excited. There was a few people that told her how much they loved Zydeco music and that this was really cool, so...
There may have been some profanities in my truck.
Well, thank you, Board. What we're gonna do is give a brief overview on the area-wide plan that was funded by the US EPA. Frank LaRocque, the economic development specialist, will be going over the brief slideshow. And then, in addition to Tom Brown from Lorain City Port Authority, we have Dan Given, Lorain City's Safety Service Director, who'll be able to give a little bit of an update. But what I wanna do is, for some of you, refresh your memory, and for others, kinda bring you up to speed. A couple of years ago, Lorain County had identified a grant opportunity to look at putting together a plan to redevelopment of brownfields. And as we did our research, we reached out to the city of Lorain to see if this was something they would have an interest in us working on with them. After some brief communications, there was a lot of excitement, both on their end and our end. We prepared an application and were funded for $200,000. Those dollars were designed to prepare properties for redevelopment, but it was not allowed to be used for assessment and cleanup. This was to identify barriers and to identify ways that the city and the property owners could actually bring that property to the market for reinvestment, for job creation, and to protect our environment. So that was how we had started, and when we were first looking at it, Republic was actually closed, and that was gonna be one of our two sites to focus on. Of course, as all the plans go, your first meeting to get moving, the headline in the paper is that Republic is going to be investing money in reopening, and so we had to reevaluate how to do this. And what you'll see is that rather than looking at two sites, we expanded the number of sites, but we concentrated rather on downtown and East 28th Street, we moved to the water. We moved to the lake, and we moved to the river. And so with that, I'd like to have Frank LaRocque, Economic Development Specialist in Community Development, to give you a brief overview. And then we'll also have Tom Brown and Dan Given be able to give you a little bit of how this is going on. But essentially, this was an opportunity for us to be educated about the land, be educated about how to be able to bring this land to development, and then to have conversations with developers. And so with that, Frank?
Thank you, and good morning.
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 I'm not sure. Like Don said, this was a grant provided by the US EPA. It was awarded in 2017, looking to holistically assess and move forward with the waterfront brownfield sites that the city of Lorain has. The project team identified seven sites in total, five of which are publicly owned between the city of Lorain and the city port authority. There were also two private sites that were identified as being, having a high potential for redevelopment as well. In total, those seven sites comprise 628 acres, which is quite a staggering amount of land to have open and available on the waterfront. And it really is a unique opportunity that doesn't exist elsewhere in the state of Ohio, and even when you bring it out to the Great Lakes region as a whole. So in looking at that opportunity, we needed to market this opportunity to the development community as a whole. You know, we at Lorain County know what a great asset the lake is. We know the potential that the city of Lorain has. But oftentimes, you know, it's Cleveland or Toledo taking the focus. So part of the process was going out and soliciting developers to participate in an expression of interest process. This was to not only teach them about the opportunities that exist in Lorain, but as a means to gauge what kind of ideas private sector development has for what these sites could do. Part of that expression of interest process specifically was working in partnership with NAOP, which is the largest commercial real estate organization in the country. We worked with their Northeast, Northern Ohio chapter to put on this event in the city of Lorain, and it was an extremely well-attended event with over 120 attendees. And these were really the movers and the shakers of the Ohio development community who could bring the kind of investment and development that we were searching for. So one of the focuses of the meeting was also to speak about the introduction of the Opportunity Zones, which had recently been designated in the city of Lorain. Four census tracts that comprise the downtown, as well as Republic Steel Site and Riverbend Commerce Park are all part of the Opportunity Zones. And so this was really a great opportunity to meet with the development community and express just what a unique opportunity it is to have these Opportunity Zones that are waterfront sites and are prime for redevelopment. So we worked closely with our consultant, Vida Nova, and really, I think, came out of it with some really good accomplishments as far as moving redevelopment forward. You know, we, through the expression of interest process, we had four developers come forward with proposals. And in addition to those four proposals, there were, I know, a number of conversations that were had with other developers kind of outside the process as well. So it has really, I think, stoked some interest that wasn't previously there. You know, we really exposed the city and the opportunity to the development community as a whole, and not just in the state of Ohio. We reached out, and Vida Nova, our consultant, reached out to regional developers as well, from Indiana and surrounding states. And another aspect of this was being sure that through this whole process, we engaged the community, that we were aligning our efforts with their desires to see downtown Lorain and the waterfront redeveloped. So throughout the whole process, we were working hand-in-hand with the community. Through the number of meetings we had, we were able to come up with actionable steps for community members to take to help advance these goals. And so I think that the city port authority and the city of Lorain can speak a little more to how the grant has worked out for them and what they've done. So, thank you.
Just an idea for your New Orleans celebration is if we play a tape of this presentation, if everybody takes a drink every time the word "opportunity" is spoken, the concert will be far more entertaining, it'll be a lively event.
Well, we look forward to seeing you, Tom.
It's really hard, when you start talking about Opportunity Zones, not to use the word "opportunity" prior to it, and every presentation we go to, that happens. But I would echo what Frank and Don stated. Obviously, the collaboration between the city, the port, and the county has engaged an active developers' community that we hadn't seen previously. What we've seen, obviously, with 600-plus acres on the waterfront, there's great potential there, and that's my other favorite word I hate to say. But we all say it over and over again, what is the potential of this waterfront property? What we're getting in the past is a lot of speculative questions, or people that really aren't developers saying, "Hey, I'd like to put up this." And then you say, "Okay, how much do you wanna borrow? What's your total project?" And we had one recently, and the poor, everybody's trying to help these guys out, and their ask is 68 million. They said, "Well, how much do you need for the project?" Well, we need 68 million. So we can't help people in that. And what I'd say, through the NAOP event, and prior to the NAOP event, we had a developer showcase, which we ran much the same way. And we bring people to the waterfront, put them on our tour boats, see the facilities from the water and from the land as well. And I think it's very illustrative. A lot of people just don't realize what that Black River corridor looks like until they get in the vessel and see it from the water. It's a whole different world. So we did that twice. And what we've got now is a lot of developers kind of held back in the shadows and really didn't talk a lot those two days. But then the phones would start ringing, either Don's phone, or my phone, or the city's phone would start ringing the weeks thereafter. And I will say that it's continued up until today. We're getting calls from national, regional developers that hadn't really thought about Lorain. We're seeing more Cuyahoga County interests. So I think in all, the grant, the website, the Opportunity Zone, just that collaboration between the city, the county, and the port, we all nominate the exact same census tracts, and we get all of those. It's gonna be a great tool as everybody starts to figure out how to use them. There's people creating opportunity funds. We are actively getting, we're taking a lot more meetings than we were, and the meetings have a lot more substance. Now, we've got a lot of work to do. There's still work to do to get them across the finish line, but I'm pretty confident with continued collaboration and creativity, all these projects are gonna take creativity. Everybody has a big ask. Everybody wants to know why Lorain, why Lorain County, what's gonna be better here for us? And we're competing against the rest of the country. So I think that we'll get there, and I just look forward to continued collaboration. And I think it's been a good process and brought everybody together, and I look forward to continued success moving forward.
It is very exciting.
And we obviously have, we're here for questions as well.
Sure.
It's very exciting, and Tom, I agree with you. I've been down Black River on a boat, and you don't even realize you're in Lorain County, Ohio, anywhere. It's very tropical. But my only question is, I saw 200 of those acres. Is the landfill, and you're not able to build anything on the landfill, are you?
Yes and no. There's gonna be certain regulations. There are some uses that you could put out there, but it's gonna have to be very, the landfill cells are pretty much untouchable. You can't dig.
Right.
But there is creatively, again, there are uses that, you know, if you go to Virginia Beach, Virginia, it's Mount Trashmore became a public park that is well-attended. So you can do things with former landfills. It's just, there are certain rules that you're gonna have to follow. And the good thing is, you know, another aspect of all this is Lorain Port Authority, Lorain County Port Authority, both have had assessment dollars for environmental cleanups and assessments. We were able to use some of our assessment dollars to kind of do a quick Phase 1 on all the properties that we're talking about, just to get some historical perspective, what developers are looking at. Well, when we held all these developers, we also had the District 5 EPA, State EPA. So we're keeping all of our friends in this process. So we've got assessment dollars, now we've got planning dollars. The next step will be cleanup and/or development dollars. So we keep performing, we keep showing them how we're using the proper, you know, channels and using their dollars correctly, good things will come. And I think they're very, I will speak for the one district EPA rep, he was just amazed. He said, "For an industrial corridor," and not to use cliches, he said, "Where's the pipe with all this horrific stuffing I'm out?" And he goes, "We've seen far worse." He thought our waterfront and our riverfront was very, very clean, considering its past history and what used to be there. So he's very energized, and he's a phone-call-away-for resource to say, "How do we help a developer get certain dollars, or what's a good pathway?" So I think that as much as we've worked together on a county level, I think also state and federal levels are very active and very happy to assist in the Lorain corridor. They're excited about it. They really are.
Good.
So I guess, just for a basics 101, the Opportunity Zones, just so the residents watching this telecast understand, if you're fortunate enough to have capital gains, you can actually take those capital gains, invest them versus taxes into these Opportunity Zones that are designated. And that's kind of the basic 101.
That's the 10,000-mile view. And the good thing about Opportunity Zones is you can have somebody in any state in the country put into your fund, or any fund can inject capital in any other region. So if somebody in Lorain County wants to start an opportunity fund, you invest those capital gains dollars. It starts around year seven, goes to year 10. You can save up to 15% on your capital gains taxes. But your investment into that project, if you flip that project in year 12, there are no capital gains forever. So it's a highly lucrative plan for somebody that has capital gains profits from something. And, but it's a long-term investment. You have to find investors that are willing to let their money sit for a decade. In today's market, it's finding the right climate.
I was also gonna point out, you know, I get daily updates on what's going on in the legislature. And I know they said that Senate President Larry Alboff was saying that one of their top legislative priorities is some legislation dealing with Opportunity Zones in Ohio. And so I just think that's something that we need to make sure we stay in touch with them and try to figure out how Ohio's trying to maneuver with some of these dollars and these plans. But, you know, I think certainly having access to water in the lakefront has gotta be something that I think they'd be very interested in. But as somebody who's been down there, I can tell you they can muddy the water sometimes. So we need to, you know, really pay close attention as that thing is shepherded through.
I like what you did there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dan, anything you wanna weigh in on city of Lorain?
Sure, to follow up with what Tom Brown has stated. I mean, from the city's perspective, we're starting to see people that aren't asking for everything. And that's the critical point. For the longest time, we've all been around long enough, it's easy to get somebody to come in and invest in your town when you're giving them all the money to invest, and they have no skin in the game. People that we're seeing now, from the larger developers all the way down to the small entrepreneurs, is there's a buzz out there again. And there hasn't been a buzz for a long time. I just, you know, I just signed a deal on one of our rundown buildings in downtown Lorain with some young guys that are, you know, they're successful in other communities, and they wanna invest in Lorain. And they're telling us that their friends are coming here as well. So, you know, we're seeing it from the top down to the bottom. I think the one thing that's critical, as, you know, you're looking at things from the Opportunity Zone at a very large scale, all the way down to, you know, Tom and Tiffany, and Don, myself, and all of you, we're starting to see that we can achieve a lot more if we remove ourselves from the picture and just show what we can do for people. And that's why people are starting to be excited, because now they're starting to see what we have versus be distracted by personalities or whatever else, you know, that somebody may perceive is there. And, you know, like Tom has said, and everybody's said so far, there's a buzz again in Lorain County. And, you know, whether it's your Mardi Gras, whether it's any of the other things that are going on, you know, we're starting to promote the positives and the successes, and we're not living in the past with, you know, the steel plants and the Ford plants, et cetera. You know, we need to reinvent ourselves, and it's starting to happen with these programs and your assistance.
Well, we definitely, you know, enjoy working in partnership with you, and I think that's important, too. When people are looking at an area, they wanna know that they're gonna be working with governmental leaders and community leaders who, you know, wanna work together. And so we're always here to work together with you and support you in any way we can through community development and this board, and working with city of Lorain, and working with the port.
Didn't we just do a pass-through, a solid waste grant with EPA, Dan? Did you guys sign off on that? I just had Mike Greenberg submit that, what passed into us, solid waste grant for EPA work in Lorain. I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember what it was. We just got it in on Monday under the wire, but it escaped me real quick. But that was, the EPA came to us, they wanted to do work in Lorain, but we had to be the pass-through entity to get the grant over to Lorain. And it just escaped me. I forget what it was. I talked to Greenberg on Thursday, told him to get it out by Monday.
I don't remember the details, but the one thing that we're seeing more and more of, and, you know, especially with the port's assistance and our engineering department's assistance, is governmental agencies are reaching out to us and telling us, "These funds are available. This is what we'd like you to do with them. You've been successful in the past. Sign up, and it's yours."
Yeah, the EPA's the one that called me. They called and said, "Will we do this for you guys?" And then they reached out to you guys. So you're right, there's activity.
We've got a lot of activity going on in the waterfront with the, you know, with the old steel mill site. We've got the dredging facility being built, which, you know, obviously the state of Ohio's involved with. We've reclaimed a lot of the old steel mill site. We work with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we reached out to them with the fact that our pilings are disappearing, they're rusting away on the river. They've, you know, they've paid for that. And once again, it's, "Let us do our job, let us do the work. We don't need the glory." And, but then they're also looking at other communities where they have nightmares happening, or the money isn't used properly. And so they're steering it to successes. You know, thank God, knock on wood, that we're all part of the success, and we need to keep that attitude going forward.
Absolutely. Okay.
Good news.
Very good, gentlemen.
Good news.
Yeah, thanks for the good news, and we'll keep the buzz going, and just, you know, the future is bright for Lorain and for our lakefront communities, that's for sure. I believe we've arrived at the point of the meeting for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? I see Mr. Whitfield from the Urban League. Good morning, good morning, Frank.
Good morning. Good to be with you all. Frank Whitfield. Do I have to give my address and stuff, too? Is this still a part of the process? My office address, 200 Middle Avenue, Suite 200, Leary, Ohio. But first, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Swita for her appointment to the board here. I look forward to working with you and working with the board. But the real reason I wanted to be here, other than that, was, you know, Commissioner Lundt and I have had a longstanding relationship, and I recently was appointed to the chair of Move Lorain County, which is focused on advocacy for transportation, and really just wanna open our arms up and share that we are interested in collaborating and working together. I know in the past, there's been some misunderstandings, some missteps, and, you know, I wanna apologize for our role in any of those missteps, any of those things that may have been taken personal, that maybe we didn't intend to. But I think we have a great opportunity. We have a new board at Move. There's new folks here, and I think we have a great opportunity to work together on transportation. So really, just wanted to, you know, welcome you and share that Move is ready to work together on this transportation issue, and really try to get folks mobile here in Lorain County, so they can get to the jobs they need to get to, the doctor's appointments they need to get to, the education they need to get to. So really looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And I know as we, as we meet this morning, actually, the Finance Committee is having hearings, and they're really addressing first the transportation budget, which is the first budget that'll move through the legislature. And those hearings, I believe, are taking place as we speak. And I do then know that the WACCA's going to be represented and other advocates for transportation in the state. We're one of the largest states in the country, we all know that, yet we're 45th when it comes to what the state allocates for transportation. And, you know, the bottom line is, it's a jobs issue. If we wanna get people to work, they need to be able to get there. Not everybody has a car. About 14% of the people in Ohio do not own a car. We also know that the millennials and the next generation, they're not really caught up with getting a driver's license and driving a car. They'd love to use public transit. And it's an economic development issue, it's a jobs issue. And for those who complain that there are too many people on social services or welfare, well, help us get people to work. Can't get people to work if they can't get there. So help us with transit.
Mr. Cortez?
It's been a long morning. I yield the counsel. Thank you.
Mr. Renus?
Well, ever since Ted left, we've-
Well, ever since Ted left, we've had a slowdown in lawsuits. I don't have anything new to report.
Just wait.
Shame on you.
Well, Thursday, I had a meeting at the Alcohol and Drug Board. I'm actually sitting on a committee that has a grant for getting people in recovery back into the workforce. And this is always a hard hurdle for people who need help with soft skills, transportation, like we just talked about, IDs and driver's license issues. Plus, a lot of these individuals are on probation, so finding employers who are flexible and that will hire people with these issues is also a challenge. Thursday evening, I attended the candidate's night, and for all those interested in the commissioner's appointment, to have a chance to address the precinct people in the community. And everyone was given an opportunity to speak and answer questions, and there was standing room only at the event. And it's great to see how seriously everyone took their responsibility in that process. Saturday, I had the pleasure of serving breakfast at Lorain County Community College for brunch with a farmer's annual event.
That was you? I thought you had a twin sister.
No, that was me. The food was amazing, you, right?
It was good.
Yeah, it was really good. The speakers were very knowledgeable, and they also had a farmer at each table that had a lot of interesting information. And was it 95% of the farms are family-owned, or 98%? I mean, it's a huge number.
Much higher than people would think, because everybody thinks it's corporate farms.
Yeah, no, it's all family-owned farms. So it was a really nice event. Sunday, the vote for the new commissioner appointment at the Bricklayers Hall at 113 and 58. And I just want to personally welcome Sharon to the board, and we're going to do some good work together, I'm sure. I truly look forward to working with you.
I as well.
Okay. And my report.
Okay. Just wanted to say to all those who were seeking the appointment, thank you for stepping up and wanting to serve in this capacity. It was certainly a strong field of candidates for the position. And, you know, I got to tell you, it's not easy for people to want to step up and be in public service. And I see Inez back there, and she got her hat in the ring for council-at-large, and, you know, it's, and Leanne as well, too. But I know that it, you know, it's difficult these days, because people, I think every time they open the paper, they see people with the letters to the editor, or whatever the stories are, or something about their personal life, or whatever it may be, or attacked on Facebook, whatever, whatever the case may be. So it's really difficult for people to want to step up and be in public service. You really have to have thick skin, and the best advice, I guess, I always give people is, you know, nothing's personal. Don't take it personally. Try to keep it to business. But you'll definitely find out who your friends are and who your enemies are pretty fast, and people show you who they are, understand that that's who they are. So, but, so for everybody who, you know, stepped up, thank you for stepping up. And obviously, I'm very much looking forward to working with you, Sharon, a commissioner. And had the opportunity to get to know you very well on the campaign trail, and looking forward to your business expertise and your energy, your innovation, your strong people skills, all those things that you bring to work with us. I think you'll very much enjoy working with us, and we'll enjoy working with you. Had the opportunity recently to speak to the Leadership Lorain County class. Great group of people. These are a lot of folks who are in leadership roles or aspire to be in leadership roles in the county, and certainly, you know, leaders today and in the future. And always a great group. And we were just talking about the realities of government, some of the things I talked about here earlier. But it was very, very nice. I think about 50 people we had in the boardroom last week and spoke with them. Also had the opportunity to be over at the Jewel of Lorain County, our community college, for their Vision 2020 session led by Dr. Ballinger. She's doing amazing work over there, and the college just continues to take amazing steps forward. And I've got to tell you, with all the technology and how quickly it's evolving, here the community college is always trying to plan for what the jobs of the future are. And, you know, a lot of futurists are saying, you know, that probably the majority of the jobs in the future haven't been created yet, or haven't come to fruition yet. And that's how quickly things are, things are evolving. I don't know about you guys, I never thought I'd see the day where the TV repair guy was going to be out of work, or the typewriter repair guy was going to be out of a job, or, you know, some of the camera people, you know, were going to be out of work, too. But that's how quickly things have evolved. It was a great visioning session, but, you know, a lot of things came back to trying to address not only the technology, but, you know, poverty. And that's something that we really need to pay attention to in this county and continue to focus more on, is lifting people up out of poverty. That's why, Frank, what your group is doing is so important, and all the advocates for transportation, we've got to get people to work and help lift people up. And, you know, people just, people want to work. I believe people want to work. They want to support their families. They want to own a home. They want their kids to be able to go to college. They want people to put a meal on the table. But we just have a lot of people every day who wonder where the next meal's coming from. And when we have the snow days and the cold weather days, I'm always fearful about a lot of children not getting a decent meal that day, because that's the only decent meal some of them get when they go to school. So that did come up a lot during the visiting session and addressing that issue. Also enjoyed the brunch with the farmer. Lori did such a great job serving the food. So, but no, it was excellent, excellent products produced by many of our family farms in Lorain County and Farm Bureau, always doing good work. And then just on a personal note, I lost a classmate of mine from Avon Lake High School by name of Tim Lahoda, who was, even when he was going through a very strong battle with cancer, just was always very positive throughout that whole experience, and was always had a positive outlook on life. So our sympathies go out to him and his, and his family. And that completes my report, and we're going to turn it over to our newest commissioner, Sharon Sueda, for her first commissioner update.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for the warm welcome, both the community as well as everybody here in the commissioner's office. Everybody's been so helpful, so welcoming, and that's encouraging, as I make a few laps trying to find my office each morning. In regard to the comments from Commissioner Lundie and Mr. Whitfield, one of the smaller segments of the expansion of transportation that I've been hearing as well is the added benefit for seniors to stay in their homes, that if we have reliable transportation, we have that other segment on the other end of the spectrum, where seniors may have the opportunity to stay within their homes longer and with less assistance if we, in fact, have reliable transportation. So I appreciate the work they're doing, and I'm anxious to dig in. I'll just close on a funny note. I got a call yesterday, and somebody said to me, "I got to let you know, I think you're going to take the heat for something I did during the campaign." Of course, my stomach dropped, and I won't disclose who it was, and they said, you know, "In the newspaper, in the Chronicle, where they have all the comments, there's all these nice comments, but then there was a comment that said, 'Well, I can tell you, she doesn't know how to drive. I saw her in her car with her magnets cut across three lanes.'" And the individual said, "And it wasn't you, it was me." So kind of, kind of a different angle to have to worry about driving when it isn't even you. But anyway, thank you all. I look forward to working closely with everyone, getting out and meeting all of you personally on a greater, deeper level, and seeing how I can facilitate the good work you do. Thank you.
Board of correspondents.
I would move that the reading be waived.
Second. Mr. Lundie.
Aye.
Ms. Gavsky.
Aye. Mrs. Sueda. Aye.
No other business at this time. We will go into, make the motion that we go into executive session based upon the reasons laid out by the county administrator.
I'll second.
Because, Jerry, you didn't have anything at this time, so, okay.
There was a second, so Mr. Lundie.
Okay, aye.
Ms. Gavsky.
Aye.
Mrs. Sueda.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Lirri. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.